neighboring districts.
Julie.
Yes. Good. I'm talking to Kelly now.
Yeah, the day after I get off the board.
I know it doesn't.
One day. You work. Yeah, I did this morning. I was at five forty-five. I was feeding the chickens and checking on the rooster. And see which animal pregnant. Well, true. He just had a new child.
So his traditional. His mouth is super sore.
Mr. McManus is doing the pledge, right?
I can.
We'll start with pledge Tuesday. I'm sorry, Mr. McManus, you're doing it Tuesday.
Sure.
If you don't mind, I just ask you. I just volunteered you Tuesday if you wouldn't mind doing the pledge, please.
For me? I'm doing it today.
That next Tuesday?
Next, yes, sir. Next Tuesday. Okay, it's Ms. Mason this morning.
That's the part I'd ask about.
Okay, I call this special budget work session to order. Um, Ms. Julie, would you please call the roll?
Good morning. Pete Littlebore.
Present.
Melissa Mason.
Here.
Jessie Bornhart.
Here.
Pat Bradford.
I am here.
Stephanie Craybill. Hugh McManus.
Here.
And Stephanie Walker.
Here.
Well, thank you for being here, board members. It's kind of, I hate to say it, but I'm gonna say it. Much better seeing you face to face than what we did on Tuesday. So I think that everybody will agree with that. Uh, at this point, we will continue, we will continue, um, with the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
The first and second, any discussion? If not all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, flag sign. Passes six to zero. Uh, at this point, Ms. Mason will be leading us in the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Mason.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this point, uh, we will be moving on to the operating budget overview. And I believe, at this point, I just kinda hand the baton over to Ms. Sutton, and she'll be carrying us through pretty much the rest of our meetings.
Mr. Chair. Are these the same as the one we got at the meeting?
Yes. Good morning, everyone. Um, so that was actually the first thing I was gonna share, so you should, that's okay. You should have at your seat, um, a copy of the PowerPoint. It is the same PowerPoint that was uploaded for the meeting. I just thought sometimes it's easier to have the paper in front of you versus trying to see the screen. So it's the same information as we've shared. Can you switch me over to the slide and I'll... The, um, PowerPoint or... Yes, perfect, thank you. So last week, we talked about the, um, total budget and we looked at the different percentages and purpose breakdowns by percent and type of expenses by expense, by types of expenditures, by, um, different groupings. And so today, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on total budget. We're gonna start drilling down and looking more at the operational budget. We're also gonna go over, you guys had some questions about charter school payments, so I'm sharing that information with you today. I'm also gonna share, um, the percent of operating budget that we have for fund balance. That was a question that was asked last week. And then we're going to, um, review the board's budget. Uh, as we talked about, we are using a zero-based method for budgeting this year. And so we'll need to go through the board's budget, just like the departments are going their, through their budgets, just following that same process. So we'll get started with, this is the chart I shared, um, last week. This is our total budget, three hundred and ninety million. And so if you start to dive, dive in a little bit deeper, and as we did last year, focusing on the operational budget. As you can see here, I tried to separate the pie for you, so you could see what makes up the operating budget, what revenue sources are funding the operations. And that's coming from federal, state, and local. So as you can see here, the, the different areas that we don't consider when we're talking about operating is child nutrition, other restricted funds, which is where we keep our grants that are restricted, and then also capital, because those are identified projects for one-time things. On this slide, you can see how, um, looking at our operating budget by purpose, the different purposes that we're using for those funds. And so as you can see here, and you would expect, uh, seventy-four percent, which is majority of our operating budget, goes towards instructional services. That's two hundred and forty-seven million. And then support services makes up seventy-nine million, which is twenty-four percent of our operating budget. The remaining pieces that you see there in that pie chart related to the operational budget is child nutrition, charter schools, um, scholarships, and some federal carryover you see there. When you look at the pie chart on the bottom right-hand side, this is where I've used that same budget, but I've separated that pie a little differently, so you can see what types of expenses make up our operating budget. As you can see here, a majority is salaries. When you look at that, um, the operation budget, fifty-six percent of our budget is related to salaries. And that, of course, like we shared last time, is salaries and local supplements. Did you have a question?
What's the dollar amount of that?
Um, let me see, I think I...
Two hundred and eighty-six.
Um, so looking at benefits and salaries together, it's two hundred and seventy-one million. And so I was gonna share that, so the benefits makes up twenty-six percent of the operation budget. So as we had talked about before, that's our investment in our employees. That's health insurance and retirement that we pay on behalf of our employees. And so together, um, eighty-one percent of our operating budget is for salaries and benefits. Seventeen percent of the operation budget is for contracted services, supplies, equipment, and some maintenance that, um, we do to our buildings or different equipment. And then two, the remaining two percent are pay, are our payments to charter schools. Looking at our charter school payments over the past, um, four years here, you can see that the enrollment has increased. There is a slight decrease in twenty twenty-two. The payments, however, each year have gone up that we're making to charter schools. When you're looking at, uh, the increase from last year to this year, you see that's about, um, thirty-eight students, I believe, and that makes, that's a two percent increase. One thing to remember, when you're looking at this chart, the twenty twenty-two, the reason the number of students in our charter schools, when you look at that chart, it went down. However, the payments went up. That's the year that the funding that we received from the county increased. It was, I think, around twenty-nine hundred per pupil, and it went up to the thirty-four, thirty-four that we have now. So even though the enrollment in charter schools went down, the per pupil expenses that we were required to share, share with the charter schools actually went up. To give a, maybe a little bit more information about charter school payments. Prior to this year, we paid traditional charter schools their prorated portion of the county appropriation and fines and forfeitures. In this year's state budget, there was a change, and so now we're required, I'm sorry, and virtual schools received seven hundred and ninety dollars per student. So it, we never looked at for virtual schools what the revenue was coming in. They automatically got the seven hundred and ninety for however many kids. So this year in the state budget, that, there was a change. And so now we're required to pay the traditional, I'm sorry, the virtual schools the same as our traditional schools. So they get the same prorated share of the county appropriation and the fines and forfeitures that our traditional charter schools receive. And keep in mind, we do, when we submit our requests to the county commissioners, we do include the charter school numbers, um, projections in that request. And they fund the, the charter schools that we give them projections for, yes.
Can you give us an approximate amount? You say, you keep talking about, uh, fines and forfeitures. And what is that number?
So fines and forfeitures is about two million, and it, so fines and forfeitures varies from year to year. It just depends on, you know, how much money, how many speeding tickets there are, how many seizures are, those kinds of things. So it's not, um, very consistent, but usually ranges from one point five to two million, just depending. And then the other ninety-four million is coming from, um, county appropriation.
Ashley, what's the percentage on that, um, one and a half to two million dollars in, uh, fines and forfeitures? What's, what are they, what are they requiring us to give out now?
So how that works is, I don't know if this is answering your question or not, but how, how the proration works is I take, um, New Hanover County Schools' student number. So let's say that's twenty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-eight students. And then I collect every month, I have charter schools send all their information into my office. And so some charter schools have three hundred kids, some charter schools have one kid. And so I take all of that information, um, and then I add up all the students to get a total. And then I use the percentage to prorate, that's how I get my percent, that I prorate of the county appropriation and the fines and forfeitures that come in for that month. So there, the amount that charter schools get each month could vary. And the reason is, their number of students could vary every month. So I have to assess this every single month and figure out what the payment would be to the charter schools. And they have to send me their enrollment every single month. And then the other thing that could change, other than their enrollment, is also fines and forfeiture. So one month, I may not get any money for fines and forfeitures, another month, I might get five hundred thousand. So those, it fluctuates.
So what's the actual percentage? The, the numerical percentage you multiply by?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
You multiply the total by the, the percentage rate. After you've added students from New Hanover County plus the charter schools, each month you total that, and then you multiply that by the, by the percentage.
So, so let's say, so I do that, and I say for New Hanover County Schools, twenty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-eight students divided by a total of twenty-six thousand students gives me a percentage. And that's the percentage I use when I multiply, then I multiply that percent times the total revenue that's come in from those two sources for that month. And that tells me how much to give each, how much to keep for us and how much to give out to the charter schools.
Thank you.
And so whenever we're projecting, you know, we, this time of year, right, we're building our budget, I have no idea. We, we feel more confident projecting for our numbers, but I, I, projecting for charter schools is a little more tricky, because I don't have all the data. And so we usually use three-year, um, four-year historical data, um, when we're doing those projections. However, I think we've, I've shared this at the last meeting, um, going forward, because the state's changing how they're funding us, they're using second month. When they're projecting, um, revenue for us for next year, I'm gonna use that same logic for charter schools going into next year. So I've already got all the charter schools' second month numbers. And, um, to be honest, for charter schools, that's usually a good number for them. Um, normally, second month is one of their higher months. And so as you get closer to the end of the year, their numbers start going down. So usually, that's a fairly good number.
I have a question, sure. Can I just ask the question? Can we just ask? So Dave, that, that, we get our number from the second month. But when we add more students, we don't get credit for them, like, later on in the year, as far as state's concerned.
So what will happen, so just keep in mind that the way the state's, um, proposing to do this next year, this hasn't actually been voted on and approved at the, um, general assembly level yet. But what is, um, the state board just approved this, um, at their January board meeting, so it's going, it's going for, to the legislators for approval and discussion. I, I, I think February or March. But assuming that that passes, um, they will use this year's second month to project revenue. However, when we get next year's second month number, they will, if our student numbers are actually higher than this year's second month, they will give us that revenue. If our numbers are lower, they will not take it away. So currently, if your, if your enrollment numbers are, um, a hundred kids less than what was projected, they take half of that money back. So they'll, with this new approach, it's gonna give us a year to kinda regroup and figure out how we're gonna adjust for that revenue shortfall versus them just pulling that money back. And, um, maybe we didn't have a plan for what we were gonna do if the kids didn't show up.
Do you feel it might pass? I know we don't, we don't know.
Um, I, I am not hearing anything to make me think it's not gonna pass. However, um, some of the things I thought were gonna pass last year didn't pass, so I'm kinda nervous to really, um, you know, say, you know, for sure. But I'm not hearing anyone, if someone's opposing that change, they're not very vocal about it, 'cause I haven't heard anything.
I think I understood what you said, but the number, what applies to us also applies to charter schools?
Yes.
Equally.
I did want to share, I think this was a question that came up in our last meeting. So this year, when that change happened, where we had to fund virtual charter schools the same as traditional, um, we only have currently seventy-three students in virtual charter schools. So when, um, I did the calculation and I gave that extra funding to the charter schools, it amounted to about a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Um, of additional payments that I had to adjust the budget for. However, our, um, projection for charter schools was actually higher than, um, the charter school enrollment currently. And so I had the money from the county to be able to pay for that, because the county has not taken, um, that over-allocation back from us.
You were talking about, we're talking about the state allocation, but if I remember correctly, it, it, it changed a little bit last year in terms of what the county does, in terms of how, when they, when they pick the, the, the number, the month they pick the number of students. And then at the end, if it's different, they now make that up, is it, am I right? Didn't that change last year?
I know that was a discussion. I have not heard anything from the county, um, as far, I've given, the county does have, they did ask for our first and second month enrollment numbers, and I have provided that information to them. However, they have not requested for me to reduce my budget based on enrollment, not meeting projections. So at this point, um, I'm kinda hoping the county's gonna let us keep that money, but they make, they may, um, request us send it back, but they haven't done that at this point.
Have they done that before, Ashley?
Not that I'm aware of. I believe in the past, um, if enrollment numbers came in high, then they didn't provide additional funding, but if it came in low, they didn't take the money back. But I know there was a lot of discussion about changing that, um, but I haven't heard anything this year. I, I did also want to share, and we talked about this last time too, but just to, um, make sure that we remember, twenty twenty-two is also the year that we received, um, the additional, we talked about the additional funding from the county. But that's also the year we implemented those new local supplement schedules. And so that impacted our budget too. Looking at our local current expense fund balance, we reviewed this chart last month. I've added the budget amendment that was approved last week of the five million here. So our unassigned fund balance is one point one million, and that is less than half a percent of our operating budget. The state does not provide a minimum fund balance guidance for public school units. However, I have, um, researched and identified an old policy that we've had in the past. Not sure why the policy wasn't brought forward, or I'm not sure that any discussion that happened around the policy, but I know currently, we do not have a fund balance policy. The policy that we've had previously, I think, uh, maybe it was, yeah, I can't even remember what year that was, but I was able to find it. And in that policy, a previous fund balance goal was no less than seven percent of budgeting operating expenses in unassigned fund balance, with a preferred target of one month's operating expenses. Now, I will share with you, there was, based on some information I could find, there was some debate among the board at that time. If, when you're looking at operating budget, should you include local, federal, and state when you're talking about operating budget? In this policy, they were including those funds. And as you can see here, if you went with the seven percent based on our current operating budget, it would be the twenty-three point four million in unassigned fund balance with a target of twenty-seven point eight million. I wanna share a little bit about the reasoning behind using, from a finance officer perspective, for you, for when you're looking at operating budget, to look at the whole operating budget and not just the local current expense. The reason is, and let's take federal for example, so we know local, we're, if there's a shortfall in revenue, then we know local, we're gonna have to cover that some way. Federal and state is harder, I think, for people to understand, but federal, we normally don't receive federal allotments where we can actually start spending that money until November. And so some way, we've got to have a way, well, I guess we could choose to not provide funding in different areas and, and not, you know, let schools go ahead and buy instructional supplies and let schools do things. We could, like, hold everything off until that federal money comes. But that's not really the best way to run a school system, I don't think. And so what we've always done is we've, in essence, used our local funds until the federal funds came in, um, and we had the cash flow to be able to do that. Same thing with state, is there are times when we don't get state allotments July one, and we're working with what we can pull down at that time. And so it may be October before we get all of our state allotments. Another thing, yes.
Could you tell them why we wouldn't get our state allotments until November?
So, yeah, so if the state is late passing their budget, then we're working with some planning numbers, and not all of our state money gets a planning number. So we have, um, some things that are specific to certain students, and we don't get, we can't spend any of that money until a state budget is passed and until DPI gives us the revenue for that year.
Um, this, uh, fund balance, the seven percent, the one month, what, you said you found those in the, in, in the records of the past policy. What year was that?
Julie, do you remember, you sent that to me, was it, like, two thousand and eight or?
It was last modified in two thousand seventeen.
Two thousand and seventeen. Thank you, Julie, I appreciate your help.
Do a search of our current ones, and there's no policy.
Yeah, we currently do not, and I, and I was, and that's what I was saying, I can't speak to why we, the board decided, or senior staff, I'm not sure who made the decision. But at some point, we decided that we weren't gonna have that policy, and so that's the reason it's not in our current policies.
And I am correct that the county commissioners at one point asked us to spend down to ten million, like, one point five million, but ten million.
Yeah, so, and Dr. Fowles, you help me if I say this incorrectly, because this was during my transition period into this role. But if I remember correctly, they wanted us to spend down to, um, ten million in total fund balance. So that would include fund balance we couldn't actually spend, is my understanding. And so I didn't bring my, um, my financial statement book with me today, but I want to say there's six million right now in restricted fund balance. And so we've got about, I think, seven million, if you look at total fund balance. But the reason I encourage the board to focus on unassigned fund balance is because I cannot legally, if something happens, spend the restricted fund balance. So we really only have the unassigned fund balance to work with when we're budgeting.
Follow up on that, didn't we talk about another fund, 'cause at one point, you were gonna take some of the five million from the other fund, which I guess didn't happen, but how much is in that other?
So I did take one point four million from the other restricted funds. Um, and so we do have some money over there from, um, where we charge indirect cost and community use when we, um, charge people to use our buildings. And that money is really set aside for, like, utilities, insurance increases, things like that. But this year, I've had to use it to help cover some of the salaries.
So let me, let me see if I understand. When the county commissioners ask us to cut the fund balance, or y'all, I went on the board, ten million dollars, of that, that part of it came out of the restricted fund. Part, part of it was, they asked for us to take it down on all fund balance, including the restricted fund balance, am I right?
No, ma'am.
Say that again.
Yeah, so the, the county commissioners asked us to start spending down our local current expense fund balance. And their, the target that they encouraged for us was ten million of total fund balance and local current expense.
Does anybody remember why they asked that particular number? 'Cause I'm sure they operate on at least three months. I'm just saying. That must mean the municipalities do.
Technically, the fund balance is their money.
Yeah.
And so all of the local is theirs, and so, I mean, that was...
And the state does have a minimum requirement for fund balance for them. And, and as Dr. Fowles said, that's the reason the school systems don't have a minimum required fund balance, because technically, our fund balance is the county fund. They could ask for that fund balance, us to write them a check if they actually wanted to. However, you know, I think the intent is it also works the other way, when you don't have fund balance and you have needs, that they would help us in those situations.
I think I can saw some heads over here.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say, I like the idea of having a fund balance policy, but it seems like we would have to be getting permission from our county commissioners before we implement a fund balance policy. Because that number is purely the twenty-three point four is the unrestricted fund balance, if I'm understanding that correctly. So if they were saying years ago that they wanted ten million in total.
Right.
Then that would be, what they, what they're essentially saying is that it's okay to have less than half a percent in our unrestricted fund balance. So I, I would be hesitant, I mean, I would love for us to explore a policy, but it would have to be backed by our county commissioners, because I don't see that number.
I think that is a good idea, to have that discussion with the county commissioners, so that we're all on the same page. I think it's, this is a board policy. However, I think as joint, um, boards, I, I do agree that that's a good idea. And I will say that I think using all of the funds like I have listed here, that was part of the debate around this policy previously. I think the county commissioners thought that that number was too high. Um, and I think some board members thought that number was too high, so that was, I think, part of the debate. Um, but I, I don't have, um, really any information to be able to say that's why the policy went away. But I can, I do know there was a lot of debate about how they were, we were calculating in this policy, the minimum fund balance. I have reached out to, um, several finance officers in the region, in the Big Twelve. I, I could only find one school system that's using this approach. find one school system that's using this approach, and that's Onslow County.
Who?
Onslow.
You mentioned your question.
As I was saying, they also give federal impact.
Onslow's using this.
Yeah, so Onslow is looking at their total operating budget when they're calculating the percent minimum, and that was the only, and I actually talked to him last night, that's the only county that I could find that's doing this. So now, I will share, like I said, I had reached out and talked to several school system finance officers to find out, you know, if they had a policy, if they did, what they, were they using? Lots of school systems don't have a fund balance policy. However, they do have targets, they just don't have a policy. And so, I gathered information whether they had a policy or not, because I just wanted to share ranges with the board, so you would have an idea what other people are doing. And so, looking at the range, the range for school system seems to be between six and 10 percent of their annual budget for local current expense fund. And so that's just looking at local. And targets, so if we use that approach, I did a little chart here for you, so if we just look at local current expense, and we use that as our operating budget to calculate our minimum fund balance, if we were to do eight percent, which is kind of the middle of the road of the ranges when I was talking to other individuals, the operating, the minimum would be eight million, and if we went with one and a half months operating, that would be 12.6 million. Kind of wondering if we could, would go with two million, because we know when we had the hurricane, we used, we went ahead and appropriated 13 million, so, you know, that was just something to think about when we're looking at it, but I didn't know if maybe that would be too high, so, anyway, so that, I'm still kind of thinking through that a little bit, but would love if you guys have thoughts that you could share with me.
You said two million, you meant two months, didn't you?
Oh, two, yes, 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 two months, I'm sorry.
We caught it.
Sorry about that.
I mean, I think it's just responsible, I mean, I'm sure they would agree, I mean, I had had conversations before I got on the board about having 23 million, they thought that was too high, but I mean, they expect us to obviously come up with a budget, present it to them, and all that stuff, and they approve it, but I imagine they wouldn't want us to not have, to have one million.
Right.
I mean, because we'd have to rely on them anyway.
Right.
It's just responsible.
So my plan is to work a fund balance policy and bring that to policy committee, and if you guys are interested in entertaining that, carrying that to the board for consideration.
So, Ashley, again, do you know the number that the county has in their fund balance? I see the idea, you know, Papa has the money, child needs extra money, they have their little savings account, but if they need more money, they ask Papa, so Papa has a string there, I get that principle, but how much do they have, what's their percentage, do you know?
I do not know.
Maybe something to find out.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's in their financial statements, I'm sure it's on their website, I would just need to look that up.
Yeah, two or three months would certainly be logical.
And Ashley, I want to clarify, the policy that I found for you was adopted in 2012, and it was revised in 2016, but I can't see, because the document I found was a revision that was in a board attachment.
Okay.
But it may be that it faded away at the time the School Board Association did the policy revision.
That makes sense to me, because this wouldn't be a policy that was in the school board policies, because it's not required by the state. So that seems logical to me.
It's been a while.
Well, there's got to be a reason that we had 23 million at some point, you know what I mean?
Right.
There's got to be a reason it was that high, even though they didn't like it that high, the policy probably made, that's probably why we had-
Oh, look at, look at, look at whatever hurricanes we had, so you said that was 2012 and 2016?
It was revised in 2016, so it still was in existence at that point in time.
I can't remember, well, I'm thinking when it was high, what was going on in our world, what storms had come through, we had, did come through the recession in 2008, 2009, but didn't we have a storm right in there?
I do not remember that.
You would know from getting payments on the storm, probably.
Yeah, I do not remember off the top of my head.
Which would have scared us to go up to 23 million.
Chris, would you mind passing out those? Are there any other questions, while Chris is going to pass out some budget reports for you, so I did email this, some of this information to you, in case you had a chance to look at it before, but if not, that's okay, we're going to go through it together.
Is this going to be up here too?
So if we, whatever money we have, thank you, in our fund balance, are we gaining interest to be able to use those dividends?
Yes.
Okay, so that could potentially also be another value add thing, that if we have a larger lump sum, that we would be able to pull to maintain the operating expenditures.
Yes, so I have staff that review our cash flow, and then based on our cash flow for the month, and projected like the next month, we invest and then pull back as needed, so we do try to earn as much interest as we can on, you know, the, our fund balance that we're not using. Any other questions about the operating budget before we move on to the next section? Okay, so now I want to take the opportunity, you know, we've talked about that we are using a zero-based budget method to develop our budget for next year, and so as part of that, every department is having to go through, and they're having to review their budget line by line, and give justifications about each line of that budget. And I have collected, I've received all of those budgets back from the departments now, so my team and I are now going through all of those budgets, and we're going to be asking questions and meeting with the departments, and then after we have our meetings, then they're going to meet with Dr. Faust and answer his questions, and so that's what we're doing at the department level. I thought, since we are using zero-based budget, we need to also go through that same approach with the board's budget. And so, what we'll do today is similar to what the departments are going through, so you'll have some kind of idea of that process for them. Of course, yours is looking a little different, because we're doing it all at one time, where they're doing it in different phases. Okay, so as we start to look at those budget reports, I wanted to share some information, whenever I review budget with you, as you've seen on the previous screens, I usually talk about the revenue or funding source, I talk about the purpose of different expenses, and I talk about the types of expenses, and so, we use our budget code to be able to filter and sort our budget in different ways. And so one of the ways that we are able to sort our budget is using a program number, and our program number is used to designate plans of activities, and so what we've done, using our budget code, we're able to set aside, these funds are going to be related to board-related activities, and so that's what we're going to go through today. Looking at the board's budget, you can see here that salaries and benefits makes up about eighty, 28 percent, sorry, of the budget. And scholarships makes up 38 percent, because we have 140,000 set aside for our scholars, our scholarships. If you're not familiar, we do have a board policy 2130, that talks about board member compensation and expenses, and that information is used to develop or determine what the budget should be for the board compensation, social security related to that compensation, and then there's also a cell phone allowance. So the policy doesn't share what these dollar amounts are, it just, and I don't have that in front of me, but it's a generic sentence that says, that compensation's going to follow the regulations requirements of the state, something similar to that. So, the way compensation is done for the board is the board chair receives 15,324, and board members receive 12,732, and so that line for the budget is 91,716. As you can see, I believe that's the first report in your packet, where you, you'll have a 2023-24 budget column, so that's this year, and then there's a variance in the middle, and then there's a 2024-25 budget proposed. So, don't get nervous, the 24-25 budget column, the only, we can make changes, whatever the board would like to do, that's part of this work session, however, I did go ahead and fill in, based on the current board policy, I went ahead and filled in the compensation piece for you, so that's what that information is at the top of that column. The cell phone allowance that's provided to the board is 55 dollars a month, and so that total annually is 660, and so we have, I've provided there the annual amount for that cell phone allowance. The policy also talks about budget allocation for board member travel and reimbursable expenses, and so each board member received annually 3,500 dollars as part of that budget appropriation, and so I've included that 3,500 dollars also in that budget proposed for 24-25. Now you'll notice there are some board members that don't have the 3,500, and that's because according to our policy, any board member that's up for reelection can only get five twelfths of the allocation, and then after the election, I'll allocate the remainder of the 3,500. Any questions about that?
So, if I wanted to detail, so if I granted money to a couple of schools to help out programs in the schools, that would be considered travel?
I will take it out of your budget, and I would budget it at the school level, so it wouldn't show up in your budget any longer.
Thank you.
Can you talk about that for a minute? How do we, I mean, I know I did something with curriculum that was minor, but can you talk about that so that we understand it better?
The process?
Taking our travel, our travel expense money and using it for something within the district, are there parameters on it, is there a policy on it, is there, are there any rules and guidance on it?
So there is a budget transfer policy, and any budget transfers over, oh, I don't remember the amount, I want to say 50,000 are required to come to the board. I actually bring budget amendments to the board probably more often than that. Once we do those amendments, I really try to bring, even if it's under 50, I try to bring it the next, the next time I can get it on the agenda. However, it's like small amendments would be lumped in, so, but cumulatively, it would be over 50,000. So just, just real briefly, let's talk about budget transfers. And so, you're, we're really flexible with local money on budget transfers, so we can transfer between different programs within the local budget with less restriction, because it's very flexible. The county does require, if I go over a certain percent budget transfer, let me say that again, the county does require if I, and I don't, I'm sorry, remember the percentage, but if I go over, if I have a budget transfer that moves more than a certain percent of the operating budget, I have to get approval from them. That doesn't happen very often, but if that were to happen, I would have to go get their approval, similar to like we do for capital projects, if I move between capital projects, I get your approval, and then I go to the county commissioners and get their approval. The same thing would happen if I did that for local current expense, but other than that restriction, local current expense is pretty flexible. Where state, I can't move within programs, and federal, same way, I can't move within programs, I have to stay, I can move between line items in a program, but not with, in to different programs. So for example, if I get a pot of money that's for children with disabilities, I can't move any of that state money to classroom teacher program. Does that make sense?
Yes ma'am. Let's say Ms. Mason has been going to conference after conference after conference, and she's exhausted her travel money, and I have money left over in mine, can some transfer through, from me to her, from my account to her account?
You can, we, if I remember correctly, board policy asks that we get board chairs approval on that, but we have done that in the past.
Thank you.
Can I have a question, so, what I heard, let me sure I heard it correctly, is that the three members that are for reelection get five twelfths of the money, but they would be, they'll be on the board for the whole year, why would they get five twelfths of the money?
Because that budget, because the budget is the 24-25.
Oh, okay, the whole year, yeah, yeah, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
And then after the election, when the new board members, which may be the same board members, are back on the board, then I would allocate that other percentage.
My question, Ashley.
Yes.
Am I correct in saying that if we didn't use a certain year, it carried over to the next year, or is that not true?
Yes, so board policy says, a board member can carry, a board member can have no more than a 5,000 dollar balance at any point in time, and so that's why there were some board members going into this year, where you got the 3,500, but you had, when I added your carryover from last year, it put you over the 5,000, so I reduced you down to Any other questions about the compensation or the budget allotments that are given out annually?
I just asked, the middle column is the variance, what does, explain that to, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so, and this is a really good question, because this, this sheet that you're looking at is exactly what all the department heads are using for their budgets as well, and so that variance column is showing you the difference between the current year budget and what we're saying next year's budget's going to be. And so, keep in mind, we haven't finalized that third column for next year's budget, I was just getting you started based on board policy.
So basically, the top half stays the same, and we're going to discuss whether or not the bottom half.
Right, so, so based on board policy, I wasn't going to have discussion about those items, of course, the board can discuss whatever they would like to discuss around their budget.
So you're saying we weren't planning to discuss the things on the bottom part of the page?
We are, we are, I'm just trying to take it line by line.
I have some questions there, too.
Okay, any questions about those first items that we've talked about, and for, those are all associated with the board policy that's currently in place?
You may not know the actual, but what would be your estimate of what this seven-member board's expenses have been last year?
So, last year, the 2023 actual expenses by the board in total were 318,615. And then in 2022, the actual expenses were 253,266, and so it's on, I believe, the second page of your handout, it's the last two columns.
She does have the trouble.
And that's actual expenses versus, but, so I didn't give you the budget for those years, I just gave you the expenses to compare when you're working on this year's budget.
So as a board, we could discuss adjustments?
So that's what the purpose of this is, because we're doing a zero-based budget, and we're justifying each line of the board's budget, which is the same requirement that we have of the departments.
So, if we had money that we didn't spend in our travel and reimbursement and education and so on, could we donate it back to the school board?
Yes, when you say the school board.
Well, to some, to some operating.
Yes, yes, some other type of operating expense. Now, the key is, if you're going to do that type of allocation, so let me just clarify a couple of things. So first thing is, if you don't spend all of your money, that helps us out with fund balance. So that's the first thing. So, and second thing is, if you decide that you want to give some of your- So s- and second thing is if you d- decide that you want to, um, give some of your budget that you're not gonna spend to a school for some type of activity. Um, you would want to make that transfer, um, around this time because I'll start cutting off purchases for schools in April. April first is usually when I start cutting off purchases for them. So we can start, um, getting ready for year end, making sure anything they buy comes in before, before we start closing out the books. We can get everything paid in the current year where the, when we actually receive the items.
And we can decide where we want it to go, right?
Yes. Now, I will say, um, and I think this is good discussion. Um, I don't know that in the past, we've got board chairs approval on that. I think that's probably something we should consider because even though, um, we're not moving between board members, we are moving out of the board's budget. So I think that's something we should consider going forward if we do those kinds of transfers that we get board chair approval. If, that would just be a recommendation. Right now, that doesn't happen very, I'm just, currently, I think that happened twice this year and once last year. That's not something that's normal or had, historically has been normal for the board to do. So that's just why I'm saying that control wasn't in place previously. But if that's gonna be something we start to do more often, I think we probably should, um, follow the rules that we use for transferring between members.
If this question's for later, let me know. It will be the individual responsibility of the principals to, if they'll be in charge of meeting with each department? How, how was that process could be? I, I, I did that for a couple of years, I don't want to.
Zero basis. So, there's a couple of things that have to take place. So you have your federal, um, so there'll be Title I, all of them, they have to meet. Then they all will meet with HR and we're looking at positions. So there's a, it's a whole process that goes through. So there's no voting at this, meaning like the vote actually comes when we bring back and we will do a full presentation of these are the, the variances that we have. And then the board, of course, will then vote, ask questions, we're, and then you'll see hopefully a huge pot of money where we've saved. And that we can say, okay, we have to hold it here and keep it here. But that's, we won't be doing that until what, April, March, somewhere in April, probably April. But this is all preliminary. We're, um, what we're doing, what you're getting to do is exactly what we're doing with every department head, um, or school at our, um, new organization.
I'll go ahead and be devil's advocate, so in that, positions are so important in schools, but yet the principal makes those calls still, correct? Was that with your approval? If I want seven math teachers and I'm gonna load up my classes in science, because I feel like that's necessary for a combination of reasons.
So when you say eight-five-eight, that's our budget line number?
So we don't, so we don't say you get five math teachers, we just give you X amount of teachers. High school is different because of the certifications and the things that have to happen. But, yeah, if you, as a principal, you're gonna get an allotment of.
So if I have twenty P E teachers that are all coaches, and I'm being serious, and then I need two math teachers?
Well, we're probably not gonna give you twenty.
You're not giving the, if, that's why I asked the question.
No, 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 we probably won't give you, if you came in and said, well, I wanted.
You go get positions.
These twenty P E teachers, like, yeah, mm, that's not gonna be the best.
Okay, I, you answered my question, okay. The principal, as a rule, has always decided where they put their teachers.
Who teaches what?
That's right. And also what position's gained or lost. At least in my time, they did, not have been that long, but.
He's saying, if you were the principal, you'd go to him and then he would say, yes.
So in the end, you're gonna go through it and approve it.
Yes, it'll be a whole approval.
I think of it as like going groc- grocery shopping for the staff that you need, is that correct? And then you, you're checking out and Dr. Faust may say, all you have is ice cream in there, you can't have all those.
I like that analogy.
Chris, would you like to speak to allocations, how, kinda how that process works in your meetings with the principals?
Sure. There are certain statutory requirements that every school has to have. But what we generally do is we have a state allotment formula and we have a district allotment formula. And we will go through and allot you the number of teachers that you have. But there is still a back channel to make sure that you don't have forty P E classes and four math classes. You know, there is a checks and balance there, but we try to give the pres- the principal, not the president, the principal as much latitude as they can have. But there are certain statutory requirements such as class sizes and K three. So it's a blend of, uh, loose and tight and things like that. Does that make sense?
Can I ask, uh, just to follow up that question? What about the, uh, support staff? I mean, is there, you know, you have to have, I mean, I, I, hey, yeah, I know everybody says, you can keep going back to Pender, but, you know, Pender had one social worker for all the elementary schools, period, not one per.
Those are currently realized dur- in, through our allotment formula as well. And any changes that would happen to a school staffing would happen through the district's overall allotment.
But that would, that person, that social worker, that's local. That, I'm assuming we purchase ours from local because, I don't know if they, when we do one per school, that's why we're outside of the allotment. So, yeah, that's how they're even gonna keep you inside of.
And remember that the, the state doesn't allot us based on individual schools. They will give you one giant district allotment. And then you, and, and they put a lot of things into the same bucket, like social worker, instructional coach, counselor, nurse, and media coordinator are all in one bucket.
So you get to pick one per every couple hundreds.
So if I understood that correct, when we're shopping, we have an allotment, but if we want more ice cream, then we take that out of local money. Am I right? Okay.
Yeah, but we won't, normally, we wouldn't give you enough money to shop for that much ice cream.
You're gonna find that out when you do the zero-based budget.
Yeah.
You're gonna really find out things I don't think that you are quite aware of, quite candidly. But, because she asked a great question, but if I understand again correctly, we're having a free, we're on freeze, we're freezing right now.
Yes.
We're frozen.
And we have, for obviously, hopefully positive and academically supported, we've been loading up on local. But with the state giving all the pay raises and then the supplements, et cetera, we don't have those funds and that's really created a hardship for us. So back to the freeze, will that freeze remain until we, obviously will remain until we have a absolute confirmation from the county commissioners of where we are or where we are?
The freeze is indefinite.
Right. That's what I'm saying, but I mean, what's the key to change in the freeze?
Um, well, it won't change until there's a new budget cycle.
I have, I have a question. So, um, in conversation, it was actually when we had our networking event. Um, we heard from Brunswick County, we were talking to some members, how they fund their schools in partnership with their county commissioners. So I, I asked, I reached out and I got a copy of their agreement because one of the things that I've seen, and I, if this is out of place, please just stop me, Ms. Sutton. But, um, one of the things that we saw with our local funds, and I know that we're trying to be cognizant of how many positions we have locally because we have to, we have to account for those raises. Because if the state gives raises, they give us the money for the raises. They have the allotments and then they have raises. But with the county, how we utilize ADM is this is how much money you get, period. So in order to match what the state raises, get, we get this much money and now the raises come out of that pot of money. And so I feel like the model that Brunswick County uses, and I highlighted this, um, and just something for us to potentially consider. But, um, this is the first paragraph. It says, request the board of commissioners, consider approval of the agreement between Brunswick County of Education and Brunswick County for appropriations of thirty-six point five percent county tax revenue for fiscal years, and it lists for five years at a time. They have a sunset clause. So I thought that was an interesting concept because as far as the governing portion of it, rather than, um, ask for an ADM from the county commissioners, which we know, we have to, are, we're gonna have to pay those benefits and percentage of raises that we get the same amount of money. So if we have to pay them more money and we get the same amount, we have less people that we're actually receiving. And so I didn't know if it was something, I, I still wanna do the zero-based budget and see where we can cut effectively. But I'm wondering if it's a better governance model for us to approach the county commissioners to ask for a percentage so that they know exactly what they're giving, we know exactly what we're getting, and when ta- yeah, for five years at a time. But when taxes increase, it's a percentage, so we would be able to fluctuate and perhaps put more money into capital where we know we need some improvements in some of our schools and things like that. So I didn't know if this is an appropriate time to even consider that, but I, I don't know if that's something.
Can you read that sentence one more time to thirty-five?
Yeah, and I can pass this down. Um, but it says, the, it's, it's a thirty, Brunswick County for appropriations of thirty-six point five percent of county tax revenue rate for the fiscal years. And it was started in twenty-twenty-one all the way to twenty-twenty-five, and so every five years, they renew it, but.
County tax revenue rate.
As far as, where I see an issue for multiple things, but one of the issues that I see is when we get the local ADM, the county does not give us appropriations for raises. So which means even though they fund us well, what we're doing is we're diluting the number of people because we're paying them matching what the state does. How the state does it, they build in the raises, so they give it for that. So I didn't know if that's something we would want to consider and we can talk about it further at a different time. But I had just kinda gotten this information yesterday after I reached out to, um, look into it.
I would ask, you know.
I did receive you reporting that to me. I haven't had a chance to compare, um, looking at that. Um, and I, and I don't know if I would have all the county data to be able to do that analysis. But what I was hoping I would be able to do is take the county's, um, financial statements and look at their taxes, if I can figure out how to see that in their financials. And do the percentage to see if we would be better off. Because I, honestly, at this point, I don't know if we would be better off doing that or not. I haven't looked at the numbers.
Would you have a guess at what the percentage would be relative to what you read here? That's what you said you were supposed to, so.
Somebody look at it.
You're pretty sharp now.
Yeah, so I had, you know. Yeah, so I haven't had, but I did get the email, but I haven't had a chance to take a look at that.
Or the, or the other thing to even consider is, is there conversation to say, is there flexibility on the county to say the state does increases, four percent, whatever the raise is? Is there potential that we could potentially get that too, so that we're staffing the schools and then whatever the state says, they said they're gonna match? I don't know. I don't know if there's flexibility for that, but I do see that being an issue, even though the funding is good from the county. There's a, there's a mishap, I think.
And that's what, I think the purpose of next Wednesday's meeting is to begin those conversations.
It's, it's gotta be beneficial, just this discussion, the zero-based, really, you're gonna open some eyes and, and concrete in this. But more importantly, I've just heard so many different now approaches, potentially that we should look at in, I guess, together with the county commissioners. So that's the exciting part, because we, we haven't really done this.
It's definitely worth looking into because, I mean, obviously Brunswick is different than us. I mean, we're a lot, um, well, fear county, let's just put it that way. One thing I learned also at that event was, you know, they, at least they know what they're getting every time. For us, it's just a weird fluctuation. I would prefer it to be more stable.
Me too.
So, I don't know. Or maybe they could, it, there's gotta be an up way. I'm, I'm just telling you, I'm very, I was very shocked to learn about our fund balance being so low. And I don't know if they know this. I know they deal, they deal on their own, because they've got to deal with their own, you know, discussion on budget, et cetera. So they don't get to keep up with what's going on here as much, except once a year, pretty much. Or if we've got to go back to them for things or, you know, something happens, but. I, I, I imagine they're gonna be kinda shocked, I hope. So at least, you know, be responsible with our funds. Oh, last question on this eight-five-eight, and I apologize, I did not read that slide. I should've known.
No, it's okay.
So the, the other, oh, you haven't gone to the other one yet?
Nope, I'm getting ready to, I, if we're ready, we'll move on to the next slide and we'll start talking about things beyond the board policy. So here are the other items that are included in the board budget. And so as you can see, um, we've got memberships included here. Um, it's about forty thousand dollars, um, that we have set aside, um, for those memberships. And I was trying to see if I have a note about that.
Can you give us an example of what those are?
I think it's NCSBA, right, or no? Is that the only thousand?
So I know, I thought I had a note, but I know, um, a majority of that is membership. And, um, for your, um, North Carolina School Board Association membership is, I wanna say it's like thirty thousand. And then there's also, um. I'm so sorry, I thought I had brought my notes related to that. Um, hold on.
Crystal can't get into their budget.
Yeah, I, I had, I'm sorry, I had some notes on that, Crystal, um, but I didn't, I thought I had written it down, but for that particular line, I didn't have the detail uh, what, that makes up that total membership line. Do you, do you know off the top of your head? I apologize.
So, um, predominantly that's NCSBA, um, and then, so that's your, um, annual membership. And, um, then you also, anytime you elect to have any of their additional services, um, whatever's not covered through your, um, board through twelve account, um, would also come out of that. Um, so that is where the, the bulk of that comes from. Um, currently, we have exhausted ninety-one percent of that budget. Um, we started out with forty thousand, four ninety-six for this year. Um, and we've spent thirty-six thousand, eight fifty-two, so we're starting to have thirty-six hundred, um, still available in that budget. And that went to, um, NCSBA annual dues. Was that?
Does it say, Crystal, what the, what the dues are? Because I know we pay for additional services.
The policy manual, definitely. I don't know how, the breakdown of that, but the policy.
Yeah.
So, between your policy manual and also your web hosting. So what happened was for this year, because the web hosting is considered a, um, a computer service, we had to transfer some of your membership fees into your computer service code. So between your management of the policy manual online, then the NCSBA policy manual, um, advisement that you receive through with the Osborne and her team, and then your overall annual dues, that pretty much consumes, well, ninety-one percent of your budget. Do you have no other memberships as far as other organizations? I think the COSA or the, the coalition, I, I believe that's currently free. Or it may be like a four ninety, four hundred, ninety-five dollars if, if y'all re-elected to, um, to sign up for that. And then the other one that was recently formed, um, the one that was presented back in the summer. I'm sorry.
You don't want Callan?
Callan, that's totally free at this time. So again, ninety-one percent of your budget is in, in that arena is primarily consumed by NCSBA, either through your policy manual, your policy manual hosting for the overall membership. Your membership for NCSBA, that is based on the size of your district. And then you can also elect to be a part of their policy advocacy, um, group. And the board has never approved that, and that is definitely a board's decision. Um, your advocacy rep gave y'all a presentation about a year or so ago, and at that time, the board elected not to pursue that.
And I wanted to follow, thank you so much for your help, Crystal. I appreciate it. A follow-up, um, with what Crystal had mentioned about changing how we were coding some expenses. So, um, as a result of Gatsby ninety-six, which was released, um, for this year, we had to start tracking software subscriptions separately for financial reporting purposes. So when you're looking at, um, when you're comparing previous years to this year, it's a good idea to take a look at the membership, software, and contracted services lines together because we've had to do some movements for those financial purposes, um, tracking. So looking at all three together is a better way, as Crystal had just summarized.
So the, the big expense under membership is the North Carolina School Board Association, and that's a voluntary thing? That's not required? Am I correct?
That's my understanding.
So I have a question along those lines, though.
I know that's a valuable resource.
Because if they're, they're the ones who like host our policy manual on like the website and stuff. So we, after we approve it, I, I forward it and say, these are what's approved and they update. So like, if that was a line item that the board said, let's consider getting rid of. So like if that was a line item that the board said, let's consider getting rid of, would we have the capability to maintain the manual without like?
That's another person.
Okay, but that's, that's, that's what I'm asking. It's like, so I I understand there's a line item, but I just, I I know what they do and for our, for our public to have access and to keep up with it, I think is very important for us to be knowing. And then it's my understanding that if we're members, that's why we're afforded the opportunity to go to the trainings and stuff? So if we weren't members, we wouldn't have that opportunity?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you'd have to pay, I think there's probably a fee after.
You might have to pay extra fee, but.
On our website, on our policy.
That's a line that I would say.
Our website is different.
That's a key line. There's so much back behind that curtain that you have to do.
Well, that's, and that, well, yeah, that's why I was like, this, they they upkeep the policy manual. Like, we make the changes to it, but they keep it. So that would be another Anita, like, doing that, you know?
Yeah, someone who literally does policy.
I said another Anita, I didn't say you, I said another.
Another job for Anita, that's what hurt.
If I recall that, I know, like, Ms. Osborne, she like grabs the District of Linger Hall policy amendments.
Yes, usually twice a year.
Right, and so she does that, um, so she based on state statutes and other policy legal changes. So she is researching that, but her team is researching that. So she's also making sure where those policy updates need to be made. So someone else would have to be, you know, looking into that.
I would say in years past, when when we, when we were always on the board a couple of years, they were doing a, not re-hall of the policy, but we were updating all the policy. So we we got, we got charged for that, that was like fifteen thousand, I like to think.
That was, so, right, we hadn't had, um.
An update.
What was the policy updates? We had to redo all of our policies and bring them up to date. And it took.
It was like a tear.
Yeah, a long time because we, that's, yeah.
I remember that.
I'm just saying, you know, forty-eight thousand dollars is a teacher, you know? We have to choose between cutting a teacher or cutting that, we might think about it.
Maybe, maybe a teacher assistant, because with benefits and everything, that's.
The average teacher salary with benefits and retirement is approximately eighty thousand dollars.
Okay.
All right, all right, all right.
Cool.
And, um, Crystal, I apologize if you already said this, but we, your budget also pays for assemblies, web posting, so that's, you know, how we post our agendas and everything for the public.
So assembly is in computer software and supplies?
Um, yes.
Okay. What'd you say, Crystal? Ten thousand?
Ten thousand nine hundred dollars was paid for, um, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Is this the time to ask questions about these other? The food purchases, is that pretty much like our?
Pizza.
Yeah, is that like?
Which line, I'm sorry?
Food, the food purchases?
Yes. Yep, so, um, food purchase would be food that the board purchases for meetings.
And then the scholarships that the county gives us that money?
Right.
It's in our budget, but like they give us directly for the scholarships.
So the county gives us money for all these things? These, this, all this comes out of the county appropriation?
I felt like though specifically, they were like, we're going to give this many scholar, money for this many scholarships.
Right, right. That you're, you're right, they did, um, earmark that money that they gave us and said it had to be spent on scholarships, so we.
So that would, that would stay?
Right.
Okay. Because I I I don't really want that one to go, so I'm glad that that has to stay too, but.
But the county tells us which scholarships they want or just to spend that dollar amount or?
It's a student.
Is it great?
Teacher scholarships.
I think we make the decision.
It's a teacher, it's, um, the four-year scholarship for teachers. Or what is, no, it's seven, how much is it per?
Um, so they receive twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Seven thousand a year.
Over a course of four years, um, for each semester that they're, um, enrolled in education-related programs. They receive five hundred dollars per semester, and they have seven thousand a year.
And they have to come back and teach here?
Yes.
Awesome.
It's mutually beneficial.
For a few years, not forever.
The supplies line, we we skipped over that one, but that that's just supplies for four meetings and different things that Crystal needs to perform the function of the board. So that's, that's what that sixty hundred dollars is.
I mean, could that go down a little?
So that's what makes up the board's budget and so, yes.
You skipped contracted services.
So, um, I think Crystal spoke to all those things. She kind of spoke to the computer software and the contracted service and membership all together. Um, and and so if you want her to repeat some of those.
No, I just didn't realize, so for example, the assembly that comes out of contracted services?
Computer.
Yeah, so previously, it would have came out of contracted services, but as Ms. Sutton spoke, um, due to how our budgets are configured now, it now comes out of computer software. So therefore, for this year, we did a transfer from contracted services and fees into, um, that. So your, your main, and just, um, your main, um, items cost-wise is your membership to NCSBA and your policy hosting, your policy web hosting, and then assembly. Currently, those are items that helps the board function, you know, through the membership and through, um, support of your items online.
So there's not really like a a savings cost that we can say, well, let's only pay twenty thousand of it. We either don't have the service or we do. Is that, that's my understanding. So those two budget lineups, the forty thousand and the twenty-three thousand, we either have the services or we don't. So I feel like that would be bad to cut. I don't know about everybody else in this room, but like, the accessibility piece.
Um, I know you have your spreadsheet up. When you're looking at the board's budget and you're projecting out for the rest of the year, do they have, um, in contracted services, any flexible money that maybe they spend, but not on the same, maybe not on the same thing every year, that they make different decisions? Like maybe the creative leadership? Um, I don't know, with your contracted service, I know you have that sheet. Do they have anything there that could be discussed?
I think there's any area to, 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 to be your contracted services. Typically, um, your things with like assembly and NCSBA, they kind of give you a forecast early in the spring for what are these are going to be. Um, and so I believe if there would be any area that you could, um, you know, reduce, it would be in your contracted services. However, keep in mind, if you choose to have, um, like a communications liaison, such as John White or, um, you know, I'm sorry.
I cut his services.
Right, those services that we cut already. Um, but if you choose to bring anyone in or if you choose to do any training outside of NCSBA, then those funds would need to come from most likely through a transfer out of contracted services.
Right, and I know from time to time, the board has, um, contracted for some consulting-type services and so that's the pot of money that's been used in the past for that.
But our personal training comes from our own little budget.
Yes, that's right.
Like UNC school government and all that stuff.
In the travel, yes.
So the board members, like students' records, so when a board member elects to go to like the law conference through NCSBA, those fees for your conference registration, for your travel, for your, um, recent expense reimbursement, all of that comes directly from your allocated, um, reimbursement account. Um, however, if the board elects to go to like a joint training, then that would, you know, be at the discretion of the board or the board chair rather of, you know, if that's a, a group expense or if that's an individual expense.
So I'm just trying to, I'm having a hard time understanding this one. Um, we not, I don't think we did, but we might have, but you had a, um, a Robert's Rules of Order person come in to train. That would have come out of this contracted services budget?
That's right, that's right.
So I kind of have a grid on it then, thank you.
It's all on the back.
All right.
Everything's on this. I think what you were looking for.
That's what I was looking for, thank you.
If you flip over one, it's on the back.
I kept flipping, trying to figure out, where is that?
It's under the justification.
The last page? Oh, right.
All right, so where's going to cut? What first, Charles?
So, yeah, on the, on the back of that front page, um, has the different justifications for the different line items that we were summarizing. And Crystal gave a better rundown than probably my justifications there. I had that written somewhere, I was working on it.
That, no, I meant like on this.
Okay, so where can we cut, y'all? I feel like the supplies and contract, can we?
No, because.
Contracted service question, what? But workshop, it's like, where are we cutting? Supplies, contracted services, workshop?
I'm sorry, where are you?
She's trying to figure out what is. Where are we cutting?
What page are you on?
The first one.
Oh, contracted services.
Supplies and materials, six hundred dollars. So that's not a big line item, but can we cut that by a hundred bucks? That's, I mean, these are like the notepads, the pencils and.
If you're writing on this, this legal pad, that that came out of like six hundred dollars.
Right, but I'm saying.
That's like fifty cent.
And so you can take a look, um, on, on the last, I think it's the last. On the last page, remember you have your expenses from last year by each of those lines and the previous year, so you can kind of see your spending level on each line when you're trying to make your determination if we should adjust any of those lines.
Looks like we can adjust it down to five hundred.
Since we're trying to look at everything, and I may have missed it, I didn't see it, I may have missed it then.
Just like teachers will have to bring their own supplies.
The celebratory, um, celebrations that we have, which are wonderful. Teacher of the Year, um, the, when we celebrate it because of our test scores, they come out of, where do those expenses come?
So, Teacher of the Year comes out of Title II, there's different budget, title, there, there's different federal dollars that we do for that. For, um, the, um, celebration of success, I think that was shared between Patrice's budget and my budget.
Right.
What, what kind of money are we talking about for those? Because that's local.
Well, yeah, that, well, I don't know what they spent out there.
The celebration for success, if I remember correctly, was about twenty thousand?
It was, yeah, twenty.
I think that's about what that was.
That was at, the one at Ashley?
Yeah, and Chris can probably speak to, if you give him a minute, he could probably speak to the Teacher of the Year, but what?
Ashley, on the one, two, third page, down at the bottom, just above scholarship, workshop expenses. Um, that's seven thousand six oh nine, was that the trip to Greensboro?
Um, I I don't know the answer to that. I would have to look at the D two. Would you happen to know, Crystal, um, in workshop expenses for last year, they spent about seven thousand? Would you happen to know if it was related to, what did you say, the Greensboro trip?
So that, um, so the Greensboro trip is related to just the current budget, so I don't believe those figures are included on the worksheet. However, that is most likely when the entire board went to Raleigh last year, for board training one-on-one, and y'all be there, um, for each or for three days, I believe. Um, so if I had to estimate, that's.
We spent seven thousand dollars to go to Raleigh, was that true?
When, when we first came on, we had that mandatory every two years training. We're going to have to.
Yeah, so hotel stay, um, your travel, all those things, because those are lumped into it.
Well, it's a thousand, if there's seven of us, it's a thousand dollars. Well, it's seventy-six hundred, you know?
I think Dr. Barnes is, he's ready to share some information.
So for the Educated, the Educated of the Year, which is the largest one, of course, we have support through the Rotary with the Beginning Teacher of the Year, we also have the Retirement Banquet. But the the big ticket item, of course, is the Educated of the Year. With all the awards and the recognition money and the conferences, everything, it's about fifty-four thousand altogether. And most of that, of course, comes out of Title II, which is a federal-funded budget.
But the big celebration wasn't in that total, right? That fifty?
Talking about the different.
I'm talking about the Educated of the Year banquet was, yes.
She's talking about a different one, she's talking about the one, the one we had this past year.
Sorry, there were two questions.
That's mine. Ten and ten.
Okay, that's right, I remember now. Just too much.
Are there any questions? I know you guys are still reviewing, I'm not rushing, um, but I just wanted to make sure everyone feels comfortable, we understand that last page, how to read that report. That last page is a really good comparison report because it's showing you the current year budget. It's showing you current year expenses and what you're planning to spend. And then it's giving you a remaining balance as of, um, I think this was maybe as of last week is when I generated the report. And so you can kind of see where you are, but since this isn't a full year, if you want to see, um, an example of full year of expenses, looking at the twenty-twenty-three actual expenses gives you a full year.
So talking about that party that the media reported is a thirty thousand dollar expense, that's coming out of Dr. Fason's budget, Dr. Faust's budget, speak to that for a minute. What kind of budget is that? Because I don't understand those budgets either.
So just like we're going through, you have a program budget that we use to track the board's planned activities. Each department, and so superintendent has a budget, curriculum has a budget, um, testing has a budget. Um, where they plan their activities for the year and we track it by program. And that's, that's when we're referring to department budgets. That's what we're referring to.
Okay.
So like, I know personally.
So wasn't your personal, your department?
Yeah, but like my person.
So it was personal. So they did use every gift that was given. They came out of their pocket and paid for those.
We did that.
They didn't report that part.
Yeah, we didn't use budgeted money to purchase gifts as for prizes. As a senior staff, we purchased those and gave those away. We didn't use budgeted money for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm not suggesting that that's something we need to do away with, but since we're going to open the door, we need to, we look at ourselves as we do.
I'm fine with ourselves.
We have an average of how many law enforcement in our meetings? And what, and what does that cost us? And I guess I want the public to know that's part of, and that's in that local.
And what budget does it come out of?
I think Mr. Anderson can speak to.
It's now going to come out of mine.
Ah.
It was coming out of mine.
It was coming out of yours? And we've, um, we've made some changes so that, uh, we're kind of consistent with how we handle, uh, safety with the physical, you know, school safety and then student safety. So we've made those changes. Um, I can look up and tell you exactly how much.
But the prob, so what's happening is these departments support the board and people don't know that. And so we help stand it up when it's not. So even though, I mean, there are cuts, but what we have to do is like, we've got to go Eddie and it's like, it'll, Eddie's got to go through his whole budget, Jules is going to have to go through her whole budget. But there are portions of there that these departments make sure that the.
The board doing, you take each one of them and kind of stick it to them in a nice way, if you asked it. Well, my question though is, what does it cost? I didn't say we don't need it, but I want people to realize what.
We pay for that.
What our options are.
Donation by the county, we pay for every officer that's in the room.
I will tell you that, um, just like many of the sporting events and other activities, um, we consult with the lieutenants and we decide how many, uh, officers are here. But in, in all cases, the, uh, the sheriff will say, we need ten officers at a sporting event and the sheriff says, that's fine, I'll send ten more. And we get twenty.
So we pay for ten and get twen- ten, twenty? But that's nice.
Yeah, and and the same thing here. Um, we've been reducing the number of deputies that we contract for. Um, and they, they typically will send more.
But what does it cost?
We budget, uh, twenty-five, twenty-five thousand dollars. That is for, uh, deputy or sheriff's department coverage of BOE meetings and graduation. And we also budget six thousand dollars for metal detection at the BOE meetings and graduation.
Thirty-one thousand.
That's the contract with the fellow out front, that team?
Yes, ma'am.
And y'all's kind of split it down a little.
No, I've, I've taken that into my budget at this point.
For the board piece, the athletic piece is still going to fall in none.
And I will say that, you know, that in talking to the captain, she'll, you know, if there's ten people here and we don't need ten people, they will pare down. You know, some, you know, okay, you guys take off and all this kind of stuff. So you, if you notice, a lot of times by the end of the meeting, we may have three deputies or something total because, you know, everybody's kind of got home, so.
And so, I would, I would like to share with the board, this is our first boardwork session for the budget. I would like to schedule another, and in that meeting is, I would, the plan was, at that point in time, we would have had a chance to go through all the department, division budgets, and then we would bring back to you, like, a summary of the different division, department budgets, and allow you to ask these types of questions. So, I didn't want you to spend a lot of time on that, since I know that was going to be the focus of our next boardwork session, if, if that's okay with the board. And we'll, because then we would have more information to share, because we haven't gone through all the budgets yet.
When do we need to do that, by the next one?
Yes, so, I would recommend scheduling something in February, because in March, we're going to want to bring a recommendation to the board for informational purposes, and then in April, board meeting, we would want to get a budget approved, so we could get something over to the county. So, I would say in February, we would like to have another boardwork session.
Well, what we're doing hopefully is we're going to educate the public, so they realize just how expensive it is to run a school system and all the just different extracurricular involvement in that. So, that's the whole purpose of zero-based budget, is to see what we don't really have to have, but it's, it's very expensive, and so. I'm interested to see that, so I understand exactly what you're saying.
And it's, and certainly if there's specific things you want to make sure we cover and talk about in that next boardwork session, if you send those to me or let us know today, then we'll be, I'll make sure that that's a topic that we hit during the next session.
What's the earliest we could, you know, basically the, I don't want to, don't rush the departments, but what's the earliest we could do that, you know, as far as, you know, when do you think, I don't know, task?
Is three weeks enough time?
No, 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 no. You know, three weeks, it's got to be, it'll, we're like March, if you want all, because...
No, I'm talking about the, she said she wanted one in February.
No, 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 I'm talking about if, to get all budgets, where, what Ashley's, so the, the root is that's, that, what we're supposed to do today is to make sure that we get the, the cuts or what you're wanting to cut today. We need, that's the walkaway from here. So, I have to do the same thing that Ashley's doing, I have to sit down next with Julie's group and the exact same thing, so it takes about almost three hours.
And they, they have a lot more lines.
Yeah, they have several more, and so...
So, you need more like five or six weeks.
Yeah, so it'll be March probably, because it may be a round two with them to make sure. And then Ashley's team has to then create spreadsheets and draw the bells and whistles with it, and then we have to really look at it and...
Do you want us to work on what we want to cut out of our budget?
Right.
And you've already kind of done some suggestions, right?
Well, we, Ashley...
Thirty-five hundred and supposed to five thousand for 2024, twenty-five.
So, yeah, so going, if you want to go back to that front page where we're working on the board's budget, so the top section, I've completed, assuming no changes to board policy, so that's those items. But then, starting with the membership dues down to scholarships, those are the areas that aren't really covered by board policy, that if you wanted to make adjustments, we could have made adjustments there and we could build that into the budget plan for next year. If you have, if the board has a preference of any changes that you would like me to make, I'd be glad to do that.
So, if we start with membership dues, in the School Board Association, actual membership, we have that number just for the membership, not with the...
We don't yet, we don't, we think it's like thirty-some thousand dollars.
If I go back to that justification, let me go back to that.
We could look, we could look at sending one board member or two, rather than everybody going to something.
Yep, so that, if I remember correctly, that is the current membership, I'm not sure if they're planning to do an increase. I think Crystal said if they were doing increases on those items, we would find out in the spring normally. I don't know if we know yet if they're planning to increase.
I think it's, make a decision right now whether we cut that or not, I don't know.
And I'm, I'm at the pleasure of the board, so if you guys want to take that information back or if we want to have that discussion today, we still have, I think we planned this meeting for two hours, so we could just take some time amongst yourself or however you want to do that, Mr. Anderson will respond with me. We have about thirty minutes until our two hours up.
Well, I mean, that's something, unless we cut, unless we cut the whole thing, you know, really, there's not a lot to cut there.
Do we know the, the numbers for the contracted services and the workshop expenses for the Center for Creative Leadership?
Yeah.
So, if I...
So, we cover that, we don't have to worry about that.
Well, I put money in your budget, so you'd have it.
Okay.
So, next year...
It was twenty, I think it was around twenty, twenty-four thousand, twenty-three thousand, eight hundred for the contracted piece, and then another ten thousand, I think, for the workshop piece, I think we broke it into different sections.
And that's the Center for Creative Leadership?
Yeah, that, so that was an example of what you went to for that one, but...
It's just an example of a group.
A contracted service, like the, we won't load that money back in, so you'll still have the line item of contracted services. I don't know, for the year before, I don't know how much money was in there, so for instance, like if you wiped it out, it would be minus, it would be minus...
I think it was about eighteen thousand the year before.
Right, so that's what you'd normally have in yours. The reason why it was higher is because I added money into it.
Twenty-two, it said it was fifty-five hundred.
I remember him saying when we were there that there was, one, going to be another session, and two, that we could...
That's already paid for.
Okay. So, I was going to say, in 2022, the budget for contracted services was fifty-five hundred.
Yeah, so that was, remember, that's not the budget, that's your actual expenses, so your budget may have been higher, but that's what you spent that year. So, that's where I was saying, your contracted services seems to be the area where it just fluctuates, because it depends on what you decide to do that year, if you try to do something similar to this year with this, the leadership, or if you have some type of consulting service that you pay for, that's the line item that seems to vary. And, and Crystal, you speak up if I'm saying anything incorrect, but that's the line item that seems to vary from year to year. It's not necessarily the same expenses every year.
With contracted services, that's correct.
And if you remember, we're going to have three new board members on next year, so they're, you know, at least they will have to do something, you know, while...
I think it was a value add, and I'm, you know, looking back, it would have been good for us to do the, see, see, the Center for Creative Leadership earlier, to be able to come together. And so, knowing that we are going to have new board members coming on, I, I think that we should have some in there, but I, I would be fine with decreasing it down.
Yeah, me too.
Looking at the last, you know, the 2022 was fifty-five hundred, 2023 was eighteen thousand. I don't think twenty thousand sounds unreasonable to make sure that we have money to allocate so that we can do some sort of training together. It doesn't, doesn't have to be, I don't know exactly what it looks like, but I think that would have been a value add to this board coming in.
The twenty-three, when we got together, was seven thousand, six hundred and nine.
That was that one trip?
Yeah, the work, the workshop expense was, I was looking at the contracted, but, but yeah, the workshop expense, so we might even be able to...
Keep it under ten.
I think that, that was a good thing to do.
I think it was too.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and, and we have, remind me how many are required that we have to take?
Every two years is when we have to do the, it's like twelve hours, ethics training, yeah. Yeah, and everything else has just been, everything else that we pretended to notice.
But did you guys, as new people, feel like that was a good learning experience for these new folks?
Yeah, I, I think it was good for all of us to go together to...
You know, after coming through two thousand and eight, writing down really hard, staying in business, you cut every little thing and it all adds up. And one thing I did was I contracted every one of my vendors, the phone company, the software companies, all that, and I said, look, we paid you this much last year, how, how, how much can we cut that by? What are we actually using? Even on my insurance policies, you know, oh, look, you're paying for twenty people to drive that van, when really only two people drive that van. And it reduced the amount of money, so are we doing that? And it's going to be done by department now, right?
We are, all the departments.
And phone and electric and all those things.
Yeah, Dr. Faust has had those conversations with us and senior staff multiple times, we talked about it last year as well. So, yes, departments know that that's something that they're responsible for doing, and that's something that they're doing during this legislative process.
I found a lot, I found a lot of services that we were paying for that we weren't using anymore. Insurance is things we were covering that we weren't doing anymore, because we were shrinking so quickly to get through that two years.
I'd say we start with the essentials, I think assembly we should keep, for sure. And y'all recommend us cutting to thirty-five hundred a piece instead of five?
So, the thirty-five hundred is the additional allocation every year, according to the board policy. But board policy also says, if you didn't spend all your money last year, you would get the thirty-five hundred this year, and I would carry over up to, to get you to, to the five thousand. So, so I'm not making any adjustments to the allotments, and according to board policy, like I said, you would get the carryover that you didn't spend from the previous year, as long as your total budget didn't go over the five thousand. Certainly, if we want to change, make a change to that policy, we could, but all that's in the current policy, board policy.
So, but we could donate it, so can we have a personal accounting of where we are in each one of, each one of our... Is that what that's here, the middle column?
Yep, so if you look, yep.
I'm on it, shows, shows what we have left.
The, the, the negative amount is what we have left for this current year budget, okay.
So, yeah, to start talking about where we could potentially cut discussion would be membership dues and fees, looking at that. That would be the NCSBA policy manual, I think from discussion, people are saying, we don't want to cut that. That's my consensus, I also agree with that statement. So, then that brings us to the next budget line item, supplies and materials. Looking at the previous three years, it looks like 2022 was seven hundred dollars in expenses, twenty-three was three hundred, currently at a hundred bucks, we could cut that down to five hundred dollars or four fifty.
Well, why don't we ask Ms. Bowie before we start cutting?
Well, but that's what Ms. Sutton is asking for where she would like to...
Yeah, well, I understand, but she's the one that handles that every day, and so I think us saying, we're going to cut it down to two hundred, and she says, but, then when you come and ask for...
Is five hundred dollars reasonable to cut it down to, or you think we can go lower?
But she's going to stay within your budget, because she won't come to me and say, Ashley, I don't know how to, where to buy these. So, we will stay within whatever budget you, you come up with, but, yeah.
Five ninety-five.
I'm saying five ninety-eight, I said a couple.
It says remaining balance is five hundred and three.
Remember, I'm very needy, so let's put that out there, after we know. Well, I think, I think we can say maybe fifty dollars off that.
Yeah.
So, five fifty?
Five fifty.
So, five fifty.
But not the top, not the tuchel pops.
Not the tuchel pops.
I mean, can there be a consensus, like, if we leave the pad, then, and it's empty, then like, Crystal can put those back out? So, if your pad is not brand new and has a page ripped off, no one's going to get offended? I'm not going to get offended by that, okay, I just stand.
Actually, am I correct in saying this one page, and it's not number two, says we have five hundred and three dollars left in the twenty-four remaining budget for materials and supplies? Yeah. Is that right, am I reading that right?
I'm sorry, say that again.
So, I think it's the second page on the two-page handout that I think you have now. It says that twenty-four remaining budget balance for supplies and materials is five hundred and three dollars? Yeah, she said, so that's what we got, five months to go for the rest of the year, budget year? We could, but we don't want to, I guess we don't want to get to a point where we don't have anything in there.
Dr. Faust, did you have something?
I wanted Crystal to say how much they used last year in supplies, if she had that.
It says three fifty-six.
We got five hundred and three dollars and sixteen cents.
So, on that...
Was that, because what she said, they could cut it to four fifty and then they would be five.
It says twenty-three actuals, three fifty-six.
I think the board is not professing, I'm just, you know, discussing, I think if y'all would want to, you know, cut it back to around four or so. Again, a couple of your supplies that we purchased or dispensed are noted as pens, pencils, those types of things.
You're not going to get this kind of savings either.
You know, I do not have stacks and stacks of those at my desk, I only buy those whenever they are requested. So, this is not a budget that we use on a regular, you know, weekly basis, only down there to the board.
Says twenty-three, we spent three hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Yes, that's correct.
So, is everybody okay with four fifty?
I think, I think we could do four hundred.
Four hundred is fine.
Yeah.
Four hundred?
Four hundred, and let's reuse our legal pads.
Let's take a vote.
Okay, and going next, the computer, software and supplies, is there availability for us to get in there? And not us personally, but for, for, for this budget, our, I can't remember our budget number, to massage those downward by asking, does it hurt to ask?
We're not getting new computers every year.
Computer, software and supplies.
So, that's simply, that's...
We spent twenty-seven fifteen, the twenty-four budget is more, it's thirty-two fifty, current, current, we're at twenty-three.
Wrong line, computer, software and programs.
Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right, sorry, fourteen, fourteen-five, even more.
But that's our, these are our computers, and that didn't come out of your budget, like it came out of your budget. Look, I held up this, and Julie's like this, and I held this, and hold, okay, but we can switch it to your budget.
Your, that comes, that's e-solution, assembly meetings.
Oh, the computers, not the program.
The web hosting, that's what, that is.
Yeah, assembly for ten thousand nine and assembly web hosting thirty-six fifty, I think that's essential.
So, that's, I think that takes up that entire line item, so I don't know unless those rates go down, which I would be surprised. They probably would go up, so I wouldn't, I don't know that there's, Crystal, do you agree, is there any?
Yeah, I really would not.
Because that's our biggest chunk of, of change right there.
If anything, I would say add a couple of dollars to that budget, because I have assembly.
Of course.
What, the fee that we paid for the current year is more than the fee that we paid for the previous year. So, if anything, you may want to consider a small increase to help support any increases for that could be received from either of those hosted services.
That would go against the task, though, of trying to cut. So, if we're going to cut, if we have to increase that one, we got to cut more on some of them.
It's only down fifty bucks at this point.
So, it doesn't make sense, it's going to only go up, it's not going to go down.
So, to budget, you think, how much, do you think it'll go up by, Ms. Bowie, do you think, like, by five hundred dollars or thousands of dollars?
Um, I would say for assembly, you could probably anticipate five to, five hundred to a thousand dollar increase. However, our services have not increased and the number of users have stayed relatively, um, the same, so...
Is it prorated against users?
Uh, no, no, it's, it's really not, but I don't think our, our needs, you know, weren't like a, a major increase. So, I would think probably between five hundred and a thousand would definitely probably cover. Plus, we have to also think about web hosting services and NCSBA, we don't know if there will be any increases from that as well.
So, if I do New York, I would say a thousand would cover for sure. You just saved one hundred fifty and went up a thousand.
I know, I said, we didn't understand the assignment.
All right, so we, we can look at food, all right? Are we willing to bring our own little bag lunch and not have to do the food? Or is it worth it to spend that money so that the staff and law enforcement have nourishment in, in our meetings? I mean, they are here.
It's a working dinner and it goes late, and I feel it's not right to not have something.
Hey, we got out three hours last meeting, we're doing better. Okay, so, I mean, do we need to keep it at thirty-two fifty, though?
Twenty-three actual expenses was twenty-seven fifteen.
So, if we cut right now and you go back and you're meeting with the department, they say, whoa, whoa, but this year we've got to do...
No coffee for you.
I'm sorry, what, what was the question?
I said, if we're going to actually do some cutting right now, that we haven't met with the department that...
No, we're only doing this.
Well, this is your budget.
They're, they're doing, they're doing this, they're doing theirs, then we'll break back to us.
Let's go back to the expert again.
So, pizza is not as house-friendly as it used to be, is it? It's still your least, your most least expensive option. However, pizza is not as least, you know, as cheap as it used to be. With Mr. Anderson stating that, you know, they are looking at the number of support that we receive from the, um, law enforcement, you know, that, that also can pack that in as well. So again, it's to what the board, you know, wants. I mean, if y'all want pizza in order at your meetings, and we'll have pizza in order, we'll cut back on the amount of snacks that we have. And with our upcoming meetings, Dr. Faust and I have already discussed, we, you know, we will not be providing meals at upcoming meetings for next week.
Brown baguette.
Bradford could fix us all sliced apples and cheese slices.
I can, sliced apples. You've never had pizza before.
My wife does that.
So would it be possible, and really just thinking about this, because we have to make some cuts, if we're only doing three hours, do we have to have a dinner?
No.
That's the thing, because you're, you only have eight hundred and eighty-five dollars left in your food budget right now for the rest of the year.
Approximately, how many meetings do you think we have food for, on a twelve-month basis? We kick away the summer, so...
For the, that, Crystal will have to, she could definitely run that one for you. I don't know, but...
I just wondered, per, per person, per meetings.
Where'd you get to three hour, uh...
Or four hour, what is it, four hour? Four hour.
He said three hours.
Those five and six hour ones, we needed it. Now that we've gotten a grip on that, too.
Well, but you think, and I'm just, because the same, the same people that are saying that are also gonna come back and say, you know, because most of us are here at four o'clock, and if we have a four-hour meeting, we're at nine. So unless, unless we, you know, everybody's gonna brown bag it at some point. But I mean, the other piece we have to remember, too, is, as Mr. Anderson said, we also have law enforcement here, and, you know, they're the same thing.
They like that pizza.
They're in the same kind of thing, and, you know, and if they're, if they're supplying half a month for free, I don't know if we want to cut, you know, say, "Well, we're not gonna feed you anymore either, sorry." That, just, I'm putting that out there, but, you know.
Well, is there a less expensive option? Because when a family has to crunch their numbers and reduce their budget, they go from eating steak to spaghetti, and from spaghetti to peanut butter. I mean, so we gotta figure out a way to cut some money off this budget. Every department's gonna be doing the same thing. We like this, we want this, but we gotta cut some money, so.
So we can certainly, you know, look at a variety of, you know, contractors and things, and order, you know, for y'all, or for anyone, rather, to, you know, take the time, the work of the meeting, that's been done. Right now, you're spending a hundred and seventy-five dollars per meeting on pizza. And that includes pizza, the delivery, and any utility for the driver. So right now, you're looking at probably around twenty-one hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars a year on pizza for the board, staff, and support staff. And again, when we first started out ordering pizza, you know, it hasn't gone extremely high, but as we all know, food in general, the cost of food is, you know, definitely on the increase. So you can probably anticipate spending, if you order pizza for every one of your regular board meetings, not any additional meeting, that you can probably anticipate spending around twenty-five hundred dollars next year for pizza. And that averages between ten to twelve pizzas per meeting. Sometimes we have a few leftovers, sometimes, you know, we're not on cardboard. So it just depends on the length of the meeting. However, the length of the meeting has certainly improved, and so we can certainly scale back on the number of pizzas that we order, or we can just supplement with a variety of, you know, mavs, and cracker packs, and other things that we know.
From that, too.
Right.
Yeah.
Same cracker packs.
What about going to twenty-five hundred?
Well, she just said twenty-five hundred for pizza, so plus nav and water.
If we keep up at the rate that we're, that we're, that the quantity of pizzas.
Correct, yes, ma'am. So right now, we average ordering between ten and twelve. And typically, I select the number of pizzas that we order based on the meeting. And for instance, like, if we can project that we might have a stronger number of law enforcement support because of whatever the reason might be, then I'm gonna order maybe twelve pizzas instead of nine pizzas, just because I know that we might have additional folks here that would need a break, and, you know, might be taking the pizza. So I try to adjust the quantity based on where we're at with the meeting, and also previously projecting how long we want to be here. But now that, you know, we have that four-hour window, I can certainly always use that as a guide.
When we do sandwiches and milkshakes, that's a little different than pizza.
Oh, yeah, that really blew it.
Y'all already have alcohol.
So I hadn't had that in a while, so you said, go into pizza.
So I did, uh, one, one seventy-five times twelve is twenty-one hundred, so if Crystal says twenty-five hundred's good, I think that's probably good.
I, I would be okay with twenty-five hundred, and then we'll just scale it back. We'll scale it back.
But again, as she said, I think she said twenty-five hundred, plus nabs and water, I mean, nabs and water come from somewhere. They don't give them to us right.
Water's not that expensive.
Where's water come from?
I don't even know.
Neither has. So we need to put out a call to the community to donate food for the board.
No, not doing that.
I'm running here in droves with food for us.
Please, please bring some here. We need to drink first water.
Who's a good cook?
No one's gonna look at you.
You got an oven back there? Uh-uh. Are you joking with me?
I think the, I think the twenty-five, the two thousand, twenty-five hundred would probably be a good range for, for your, for your budget. We predominantly use one provider for pizza. They're accustomed to us, and they typically have sales. And if y'all wonder why you get one type of pizza one month, and then get a better variety the next month, of course, I can keep on, I can down.
Yeah.
Something wrong with that, I like coupons.
So, you know, whatever we, whatever we're bringing in, I utilize whatever cost savings I can. For instance, like the board that y'all have here at today's meeting, that was, that was on sale. So I'm not buying whatever I can get in the cart, you know, quickly.
She's not buying any kind of ice cream.
I'm buying whatever is most cost-effective for the board's budget.
Well, she says twenty-five hundred, I'm trying to find twenty-five hundred.
Okay, go with twenty-five hundred, yeah.
And just with the idea that we're trying not to have any leftovers.
Correct, yes, ma'am. And so with that in mind, I'm just trying to, you know, scale back, and, you know, I think we all that are predominantly here are activities, and so we have to understand that. The, the book may not be as deep as it has been in the past, so...
My question is, when do we need to ask?
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to open that up ourselves.
It'll be a June party if there's money. Ice cream party if there's money, because it's June, and then it starts over.
Hey, can we use our travel money for an ice cream party? We can, can't we?
Um, I don't think so. I think the policy actually says for travel.
Okay, so then, so twenty-five hundred for that, then contracted services, is that twenty-three thousand, but the year before it was eighteen, and the year before it was fifty-five hundred?
Did we talk about why it jumped from eighteen to twenty-three?
The Center for Creative Leadership, but Dr. Faust transferred money into our account so that, like, initially, it wasn't budgeted for that.
Yeah.
Do we want to go back down to eighteen, or do you think...
Oh, yeah, because when, when a, when a family's, you know, looking at a budget crisis, they will pull that back on their travel, and that kind of, of, quote-unquote, entertainment and training, so I think we should pull way back on that.
So it's eighteen or lower?
Contracted services, we, we don't have John White anymore, correct?
Correct.
Any, anything else we've been using?
I don't think there are annual things coming out of that code. It's, it varies depending on what's going on with the board at that point in time.
Yes, so if there is a budget line item that could significantly be scaled back, I think, it could definitely be by the, the last one, by the house, and the certain contracted services, just based on the use that I have with the board, that that is probably the line item that can probably...
How significant, Ms. Bowie?
I, I would say, you know, fairly...
Can we cut it in half?
The number six thousand, do they need more than six thousand?
Of that, six thousand?
For contracted services. At this time, I would foresee that, however...
Five thousand?
I, I think so.
Cut it five, or go to five?
I think you could probably go to five.
All right, love it.
So I heard five.
I mean, as long, what, I'm sorry, as long as y'all understand that that's where it's, it's at, is, is that five thousand?
Can I ask a question? The contracted services, is that where we spent the sixty-nine eighty? Now, that's workshop, I'm sorry, forget that, okay.
Okay, so five thousand for contracted services, and the last one is workshop expenses.
I say keep the sixty-six, seventy-six, or, because the new members that are coming in.
So keep it at a nice number, like eight, though? Or do we really want to put, Ashley, say, keep it at seven thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and eighty cents?
We don't know if that'll go up.
Because if you don't spend it, you, you, you know...
It's, she gets used to it. So workshop expenses to put eight thousand?
So the only thing we spent in workshop was that Raleigh road trip, right? That's the only thing that's in that ten thousand dollar budget from this last year, if I'm reading what my notes are. That seventy-six oh nine eighty was the Raleigh trip, so that's the only thing we did that came out of that line item.
What were you gonna say?
And we will do that again in January twenty-five? I imagine so, I imagine so.
Crystal, do you think that will be enough next year?
Get your ethics training at the same time, just get...
She said eight thousand?
Walker brought up the point that we don't know if the cost is gonna go up, so eight thousand would probably be better, yeah.
So to recap, four thou, four hundred for supplies and materials, computer software and supplies, fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty, other food purchases, two thousand, five hundred, contracted services, five thousand, workshop expenses, eight thousand. Any questions?
So we saved, i- i- if we go to five thousand on contracted, that's, puts us up eighteen thousand, eight hundred dollars just on that one, so that's...
Does anybody else want to add them all up?
Ashley can later, she'll tell us.
Yes, I'll, I'll complete this form, and I'll send it to the board, so you'll have a copy. I want to go back, I had written down for supplies and materials, four fifty, did we settle on four hundred?
I thought it was four hundred.
We're cutting down twenty thousand dollars.
About twenty thousand five hundred. I think four hundred is what we said, yes.
Thank you.
I said, we're, we're cutting out twenty thousand dollars.
We're about twenty thousand five hundred at this point, something like that.
Food and purchases, I guess.
Okay, so I will make those adjustments. I will send this new document with the changes out to the board, so you'll have that for information, and that's what I'll use in our, as we build our budget for next year. That'll come back to you for recommendation. So I think...
That means no raises for us?
Almost done.
A, a raise would require a change in the board policy, and we would have to go to the county committee.
Yeah.
So according, according to what we have here, I'll make those changes. But I, I, I hope this was helpful, not only to learn more about your own budget, but also to learn about the process that the different departments are going through, and the conversations that they're having within their areas, knowing, you know, that, the activity that we did today. And so we will, I'll get with Dr. Faust on dates or, or a time range for our next budget board work session, and then we'll see if we can settle on a date. All right, thank you.
All right, this is point for board members. I think we are done. We just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Second.
We have your pizza.
Mr. Man is buying pizza after this.
Y'all meet me there if I like, tell me the charge.
With ice cream.
All right, we have a first, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed. Pass six-zero. Thank you, board members, and central office staff, for a good day. Mr. Man is buying ice cream and pizza.